We can go ahead and call the meeting to order if I can get roll call. Commissioner Anthony?
President.
Commissioner Rosales?
President.
Commissioner Bauma?
President.
Please note that Commissioner Dobbs, we have three absences tonight. You have those noted. Okay. Is there any advance or request to speak tonight?
Pledge. Vice Chair, we need to do the pledge.
Yep, got it. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chairman Rosales?
Everybody puts your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I was saying, sorry, do we have any communication on matters not on the agenda?
Yes, Vice Chair, we actually have four slips this evening. Would you like me to proceed?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I will announce the first few speakers on the screen, and after that, please watch for the next few speakers. First, we have Diane Nygaard. Second is Zoe Erickson, Meg Ley, and Carol Ley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and citizen. This is Diane Nygaard, and I'm here tonight as a private citizen, but one who's attended hundreds of board and commission meetings in many cities over the last 40 years. And there were some things about your last meeting that I found disturbing. At that meeting, you were considering the sci-fi facility, wireless facility at the entrance to El Corazon Park. And comments from several of you made it very clear you had some concerns about that project. But I can assure you, your concerns don't have any impact on the project unless they're put into project conditions and become part of the formal record. This is a project where a private company now has this ugly little facility at the major entrance to our park. And while it was noted that the city will just have to simply move the multi-access trail 20 feet to accommodate it, my question is, why would the city taxpayers bear the cost of doing that instead of the developer who came up with this project? Why couldn't that facility have been across the street or somewhere else on El Corazon, or simply moved 20 feet to save the city that future cost? When staff brings projects to you, it just means they meet the minimum requirements. Not that they're great or good, they meet the bare minimum, but you can have higher standards. Most projects that come before you, you have discretion. You can add conditions to your approval of the project. Your knowledge of the community and community input are all part of what you can and should consider in making your decisions. Of course, you can't do that arbitrarily. There needs to be a nexus to the project. It needs to be based on findings. You don't need to come up with that on the fly. You can express your concerns and conditions. It becomes staff's obligation to come up with a justification if that's possible. I'm going to send you some comments in writing, just hopefully as a reminder for the future. But I ask you to please remember that you serve the community. You're not a rubber stamp for staff, and I encourage you to add the conditions that will make projects a better fit with our community.
Hello. Good evening. I'm here for the Olive Park Apartments, the proposed. My name is Zoe Erickson. I live at 403 Far 5 Olive Drive, right smack dab in the middle of the road. It will be the only entrance and exit for 282 homes. I've been reading the draft EIR, and I'm finding inconsistencies. For instance, on page 253, it mentions would generate no more than 100 cars, 280 units, under 100 cars. But then further on, it mentions 1,378 daily trips. So that is definitely inconsistent, 93 during the peak hours and 84 during the PM hours. When, you have to leave tonight even, you have to ease out into the traffic from Olive going east, and then you want to turn north on College. You have to ease out into the intersection and hope that someone coming westbound on Olive will allow you to get in. Otherwise, you just hope that no one, east, north and southbound on College, hit you. This is not acceptable. It's not safe. One of the other things it says, support programs that encourage increased vehicle occupancies and trip reduction in order for residents to enjoy the quality of life that currently exists in Oceanside. I do not see quality of life right now with that situation, and with 282 additional units, it's going to be worse. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, I'm Meg Ley. I just want, I also am a resident of Olive Drive, and I'm speaking about the Olive Park Apartments. I obviously have not had a chance to read through the whole EIR since it's about 4,000 pages. But I had noticed that it said for the traffic, it says that our street has a daily volume of trips for cars. It's 233, and I don't believe that that's an accurate number because a couple of my neighbors, we have blink cameras, and they record everyone that comes by. And the daily trips on average for our street is anywhere between, like, low end would be 20 trips a day, high end would maybe be 60. So for me, that's really concerning because I don't think that the EIR is accurately depicting some information, and I just wanted to speak about that to kind of let you know. Once I actually have the ability to read through the EIR, I will be in more communication with you to let you know what's going on with that. But thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Carol Ley, and I'm a resident of Olive Drive. And my biggest concern is the traffic. And I understand, well, first of all, a three-story, 288-unit apartment building at the end of a cul-de-sac is going to be an eyesore. But I know that the state doesn't really care about that. So I have a feeling that one way or another, we're going to get an apartment building at the end of our street. And my daughter did overstate our blink doorbell. We get about 30 cars a day unless at night a cat comes by, and that could register. So about 30 cars, and the EIR did say 1,360 cars, additional cars coming up and down our street, which is about 20 houses long, maybe 10 houses long. So our street is going to be a driveway for these apartments. What I'd like to see is if it's a possibility to come up Avenida Del Oro and make that the entrance and exits to the apartments. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Malik, that concludes our speakers on non-agenda items.
Great. Anything else made in advance? We're good?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Recommend we make approval for the June 24, 2024 meeting. Can we get a motion to adopt?
Oh, make a motion to adopt.
Excuse me, I guess it was a previous meeting. Second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Where's my vote? There we go.
Let the record show that the motion passes 3-0 with Vice Chair Malik abstaining.
I was absent for that meeting, so I couldn't vote. Okay. We have any, anything for the consent calendar? Any transportation items?
No, Vice Chair, we do not.
For tonight's public hearings, format for tonight shall consist of an opening presentation by city staff, testimony beginning with the project applicant, property owner, limited to a total of 20 minutes, testimony from the general public, limited to three minutes each, with, there are some exceptions, as we have groups tonight speaking on behalf of these projects. So some of those will be presented in a 10-minute block. Yeah. That's it. First item, consideration of two development plans and conditional use permits for the construction operation of two unmanned prefabricated telecommunication equipment shelters with emergency generators. Oh, that's, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Item four is the Junkyard Sports and Bar.
I'm reading off the wrong one. Got the last, last, last meeting's minutes. Sorry, guys. Public hearings for tonight. Consideration of a conditional use permit, requesting to amend an existing conditional use permit to extend hours of operation for alcohol sales and allow for indoor live entertainment and ancillary dancing accessory to a restaurant at 3617 Ocean Ranch Boulevard. Disclosures. Disclosures. Oh, the disclosures. You have to bear with me, it's first time sharing. I'd just like to know if we have any disclosures?
Yes, I do. I've been to this location several times and very familiar with the site, read the staff report.
Also familiar with the site, and I think Louise and I were on the commission back when the first junkyard was in its original location and got approval for a CUP, so.
Also familiar with the site and the staff report.
And I'm also familiar with the site and the staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Weedman with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting item number four tonight. The project site, known as the Junkyard Sports Bar and Grill, is located at 3617 Ocean Ranch and Ocean Ranch Plaza. The red inset on the left shows the extent of the aerial image on the right. The junkyard is situated at the southeast corner of Ocean Ranch Boulevard and Rancha Del Oro Drive. The project site lives within the Ocean Ranch Corporate Center. The subject site is designated light industrial by the general plan with a zoning designation of limited industrial. Ocean Ranch Plaza was established within Ocean Ranch to support light industrial uses by providing retail, food service, and medical office uses. The junkyard originally opened for business in 2011 at 3613 Ocean Ranch Boulevard, after securing a conditional use permit to serve full alcohol, which includes distilled spirits within a restaurant. The junkyard is considered a restaurant and sports bar, offering a full menu with both indoor and outdoor dining, karaoke, and occasional live entertainment. The original conditional use permit was approved by the Planning Commission on March 28, 2011. In 2018, the junkyard relocated to its current location at 3617 Ocean Ranch Boulevard. The junkyard was not required to apply for a new conditional use permit when they relocated as they relocated to a different suite within the same commercial center. Their current hours of operation are generally between 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM, with variations depending on the day of the week. In March 2024, the junkyard underwent a change in ownership. The new owner, who is the project applicant, intends to renovate and expand the business to provide a high-quality establishment that will benefit the surrounding neighborhood, business park, and visitors to El Corazon. As a result, the applicant submitted a request to amend the existing CUP. The junkyard is requesting an amendment to their hours of alcohol sales and service to better align with its role as a sports bar and grill, to accommodate early broadcast sporting events and offer brunch as an option for early arriving customers. They are also requesting the addition of indoor live entertainment and ancillary dancing to accommodate customers who would like to stand and dance during live events. Entertainment would range from classic rock to gospel and pop, and the applicant intends to generally host live entertainment from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. However, entertainment shall be permitted between the hours of 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. The junkyard is also expanding into an adjacent suite, as seen here via a building permit. This expansion is not part of the use permit request, as the junkyard already has a use permit for full alcohol sales within the center. The expansion will include additional seating, seen in by the red dots, a small stage, which is in green, a service bar, pink, and new restrooms, which are shown in blue. The request for a conditional use permit is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan and complies with the zoning ordinance in the following ways. One, the existing use consists of full-service restaurant and is consistent with land use permissible under the limited industrial zoning. The extension to hours of operation in addition of live entertainment will foster a sense of community, providing a niche that will give the surrounding neighborhood a place to enjoy sports, music, and food. Two, the subject property is conveniently situated near El Corazon, their associated uses, and various commercial businesses. An amendment to the existing conditional use permit will foster increased local economic activity and social interactions through live entertainment and extended operating hours. Three, the request to modify allowable hours for alcoholic beverage sales from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM has been reviewed and evaluated by the Oceanside Police Department. An extension to the junkyard's hours of sales and service would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, as it would align with the practices of many other restaurants that include alcohol in their brunch offerings. Four, the request for live indoor entertainment with ancillary dancing is in accordance with Article 30, Section 3010. The proposed indoor live entertainment would be classified as an accessory use rather than a full-service restaurant with live entertainment, as defined in Article 4, due to the applicant's request to extend the hours of operation. As proposed, the live entertainment would be held indoors only, ensuring it does not negatively impact surrounding businesses. This project meets the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and is compatible with existing and potential limited industrial uses permitted within Ocean Ranch and the commercial-oriented uses permitted within Ocean Ranch Plaza. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving the project as proposed. That concludes my presentation for the Junkyard Sports Bar and Grill. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I had a question, actually, maybe two. So the CUP is for, partly for the live entertainment and dancing, or because people want to, I thought, I thought that was an interesting little line, people want to stand and dance?
Yes.
You have to have a CUP to do that. So don't do that at home, folks, unless you have a CUP. So is it for the live entertainment or for the ability to stand and dance?
It's for the ability to stand and dance. Their original conditional use permit had a line, a condition that said dancing is prohibited. So this would allow for ancillary dancing.
Be careful out there if you start wiggling a bit. The other question I had was, so they, the alcohol sales will go, will be extended from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM?
Correct.
Yet the standing and dancing will be allowed until 2:00 AM. Why not line those two up to both be 1:00 AM? Because I imagine after 1:00 AM, they can't sell any more alcohol.
Correct. They would like to extend the hours to 2:00 AM, so they are able to sell up until 1:00 AM and have customers able to enjoy their drinks and their food after sporting events and be able to enjoy it before they have to leave at 1:00.
Let people stand and dance it off for that extra hour?
Yeah, exactly.
Called last call.
Yeah, last call, yeah. Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other questions? Okay. Get a motion?
Applicant.
Oh, does the applicant have any questions?
Hi there. I didn't know I would be asked to speak, but I'm Julie Lowen, and I bought the junkyard in March. And if you've been in there, we have really done an amazing remodel. We've turned it into an antique junkyard, kind of a muscle car junkyard. I've got a 1920s gas pump and some antique signs and some really cool stuff in there. We are also a founding partner for the Front Wave Arena, so we have sponsored the Junkyard VIP bar in there. We've got a junkyard party deck and a junkyard sky deck. And you are correct, we would like for customers to be able to end their alcohol purchases at 1:00, and we would like to make sure that every single person leaving there has had plenty of food, plenty of water, and plenty of time to make sure that that last drink did not impact them. So we would like to stay open till 2:00. And we hope that you approve it. It's going to be a really cool project. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, I've been into both your establishments, the Junkyard and Right Next Door, Manjee Byvy. So I just had dinner the other night, and I was asking Tori about, like, how's it going with the CUP? He knows you very well and says you're very nice, and he's really welcomes your, that you've come there and you've done a good job. But I just was wondering, because we were there eating on the outside patio, and so how, like, I mean, he's got music that's kind of more, you know, for eating nice, fine Italian food, and you guys are raging next door. So how, when you guys activate with dancing and all the other good stuff that's going to happen, is it going to be piped outside then, too, the music that the band's going to be playing or whatever's happening on the stage?
It will not. We respect Tori, and we make sure that he's got, he's got our little text message, "It's too loud, Julie, turn it down." Right now, we're struggling a little bit because we put in a new system, and so every time somebody turns on the jukebox, it resets the volume and it just blasts. And so we're, we're struggling with that. But no, we really, we love Tori, we love the work that he does, and we're, we're determined to be amazing neighbors for Tori. We'll make sure doors are closed and that we do everything in our power to work as a team to bring more business into the shopping center. I think our customer base, I know we have to close our kitchen for remodeling, and Tori's putting together a menu, and we're going to make sure our customers are introduced to everything he's got going. He's a super cool person. He helps us with ice when our machine broke and, you know, it's been fun. It's my first restaurant, though, so it's been, I own Children's Paradise, and I also have a...
Children's Paradise?
Yes, I've got a beautiful center here in Oceanside. It's gorgeous, and it really works well for families looking to open a couple more in Oceanside, so.
Don't you guys do, like, vegetable growing in Children's Paradise? Isn't that the one that has the farm and the kind of agricultural?
Farm to preschool, garden to preschool. We do harvest of the month, a lot of really cool things. And one of the cool things is we have personal chefs on staff for all the kids. They rate like that. They've got chefs making super fun things, and then they get to be their own chef. And so we have a lot of fun with food, and this seemed like just an obvious place to go. I own the first national bank and building in Vista, and my intention is to put a live music venue there. So I figured I'd better get my feet wet, and this is a good, good opportunity.
Cool. Well, thank you. You definitely expressed that you're a good neighbor.
Awesome. I promise to be.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. We get a motion? Is there any slips to speak on this? I'm sorry.
Vice Chair, we do not have any slips tonight on this item.
Anybody still wants to come up to speak on, on this issue? Great. Okay. Now, can we have a motion?
Looks like we're done with our audience and public hearing items, so I'll make a motion. Looks like a great addition. It's already a great business, but looks like it'll be able to add a couple of needed features. And again, you'll be able to stand and wiggle a bit if you visit the junkyard. So I'll be glad to make a motion to confirm issuance of a, let me make sure I get the verbiage correct, confirm issuance of a category exemption for SEQA and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2024 P14, which approves the conditional use permit, CUP 2405, with findings and conditions.
Second?
I would second.
Let the record note that the motion passes 4-0. Good luck.
Our next agenda item is Agenda Item Number Five, consideration of two conditional use permits, requesting to add cannabis distribution and non-volatile manufacturing to an existing cannabis, non-storefront facility with an existing 4,800-square-foot building located at 2935 San Luis Rey Road. And disclosures again. Do we have any disclosures, please?
Just basically a drive-by and staff report.
Staff report, drove by, and I think Louise, you and I were also on the Planning Commission when the initial business was stood up.
Yeah.
So that as well.
Also a drive-by and staff report.
Okay. And also very familiar with the area, and read the staff report. Thank you. Dean?
Thank you. Evening, Chair, Commissioners. Dean Thompson with Planning Division, presenting item number five tonight, the Medleaf Microbusiness Cannabis Conditional Use Permit. Before getting into the project, I wanted to take a moment to define the relevant cannabis license types. So retail is the sale of cannabis products to the end consumer. Within retail, you have storefront licenses, which are dispensaries, as we all know them. Dispensaries can also deliver cannabis products. Non-storefront licenses are restricted to delivery only. Distribution is different from delivery in that it's only business-to-business transport of cannabis products, so they can transport cannabis between cultivators, manufacturers, or retailers. Distributors also can provide storage services, and typically, they arrange for testing. Manufacturers can process cannabis, which commonly involves extracting compounds from cannabis plant materials or infusing compounds into final products, or both. And microbusinesses are the cannabis version of a craft brewery. Essentially, that's when you have at least three of the following activities at one location, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and retail. So to get to the project, the subject site is a 17,000-square-foot lot that is zoned limited industrial, located on San Luis Rey Road within the airport community and the Oceanside Industrial Park. Here, you can see the 4,800-square-foot industrial building that was built in 1960. The applicant is currently operating a non-storefront delivery facility out of the subject location, which was approved in 2020. Some of you may remember when this came, when that came before this body. Later in 2022, the applicant was awarded administrative local licenses for manufacturing and distribution, and CUPs are the next step in the process, is why we're here tonight. And I will remind the Commission that tonight's vote is for a recommendation. The applicant is proposing to become a microbusiness by adding cannabis manufacturing and cannabis distribution services to their existing non-storefront retail facility. Microbusinesses offer a unique opportunity to integrate multiple aspects of the supply chain into the business, which can potentially award them a competitive advantage due to cost-saving. No expansions are proposed along with this request, and no extraction equipment is proposed at this time, though the use permit would allow that opportunity. Hours of operation are not proposed to change, which are limited to 10:00 PM for operations and 9:00 PM for deliveries. The project has been reviewed and found to be in conformance with all relevant city codes and policies. The project is consistent with the general plan, as the use would not have impacts on the surrounding properties above those typically found for industrial uses, and the request would not increase foot traffic or loitering, as the site would not be open to the public. The project complies with the zoning ordinance in that the limited industrial district allows cannabis manufacturing as well as cannabis distribution. And the project is consistent with the municipal code, as compliance is embedded in the local license process. license process and verified annually through onsite compliance audits. With the conditions placed on the project, staff believes the CUP findings can be made and the project would not be detrimental to public health or safety. All regulated uses are prescribed certain separations from sensitive uses, like schools, parks, preschools, residential districts, and regulated uses. This project does not meet all those locational requirements, so they are requesting a waiver. The City Council may grant that waiver only if the listed findings can be made, which include not being contrary to the public interest and not impairing hereby prop. Project site is located 180 feet away as the crow flies to another regulated use, which is also a cannabis manufacturer distributor or will be shortly. However, both businesses are close to the public and would not have compound impacts to the community. The site is also 130 feet as the crow flies to a residential district boundary. However, there is no direct access across Mission Avenue, which is fenced off, and a 50 mile an hour four lane arterial. The closest crossing across Mission is 1,500 feet away from the site, making the closest residence actually within the industrial park, there's about five residents approximately 1,400 feet away. Given the context, staff finds that the project meets all the findings shown previously and that a waiver of locational requirements aren't. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution recommending City Council approval of the CUPs and a waiver of locational requirements for a proposed micro business facility at 2935 San Luis Rey Road. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is in the audience. I don't believe they have a presentation, but we'll both be available for questions. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dane, thank you Dane for that and a question. Can you go back to the very first slide? I found that to be really useful, the different kinds of businesses related to this kind of use. Yeah.
Thank you. That's actually, I like that slide. It's very helpful to kind of understand what the respective businesses are doing. So that leads me to my question. It looks like they're going all the way to the micro business, which covers kind of any or all of these. In the staff report, the bottom of page two, there was a sentence, maybe you can help clarify, applicant's not requesting to have extraction equipment on site, only desiring, only desiring the ability to infuse cannabis extract, da-da-da-da. However, the requested use permit would allow for non-volatile extraction and processing should that be desired in the future. So I think I understand that, but I guess my question would be, would they have to come back for anything else? It looks like they're going all the way to level four essentially, so any change in the business model after this? Would not require any changes in the CUP, or would they?
Commissioner Rosales, so these CUPs are to approve distribution and manufacturing. Cultivation's the one that will be left out. They would need a separate CUP for that. The CUP for manufacturing, there's actually multiple license types within all of these. There's a few within distribution, a few within manufacturing. Within manufacturing, there's volatile manufacturing, which typically involves flammable gases like ethanol. Ethanol might be non-volatile, but butane, propane, and is typically not allowed by a lot of cities. City of Oceanside allows non-volatile manufacturing, which is, I believe you've seen a few other manufacturing licenses come through here. That's to be able to extract through mechanical presses, through butter, oil, or I believe ethanol. There's also another license that's just for infusion of different products. So you buy the compounds already extracted and then infused. That's what they have requested through the state initially, but the CUP is for non-volatile manufacturing, just like all the other ones. So they could do that administratively through a simple-
Okay.
Change this through staff.
Okay, that makes it, thank you for that.
Thank you.
The locate, location waivers, those were similar the last time they were here for a change in CUP, right? So there's nothing new, those same standards are in place as they were last time?
Same standards, though that other cannabis business got their CUPs after Medleaf got their original one. So Medleaf got a waiver from the residential district, then when that other business came in, they got a waiver from residential district and from this applicant. So now it's basically the same waiver that was approved a couple of years ago.
Okay, great, thank you. No more questions.
And Dane, you said the applicant has no comments?
I don't believe so, Chair.
Any public comments?
Vice Chair, no, no comments on this item.
We make a motion to approve?
There's no applicant.
Say again?
There's no applicant.
There's no applicant presentation.
I was going to ask where they actually get their-
They're here if you want to ask any questions.
Okay, yeah, I have a question.
Where, where exactly do you guys get your, you know, your grown cannabis? You know, you can't grow it yourself, so where do you actually buy it from? Just kind of curious.
My name is Christian Box, I'm one of- My name is Christian Box, one of the owners of Medleaf. While we purchase the cannabis from manufacturers or directly from the cultivators. So we, we get it from them, then we bring it to our facility and then we would be distributing it to other retailers or other distributors.
I just was, where is your cultivators?
There is multiple throughout the state.
Oh, you have many, so like, none of them are in Oceanside then, right? You don't get anybody from our Southmore Hills area?
Correct.
Okay.
From anyone.
Just was asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? Get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permits. There's two of them, CUP, is that 20, CUP 22 or 24? Since we are in year 24.
22.
22.
22, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve, well, to approve consideration of two conditional use permits, CUP 2211 and CUP 2212, which includes a waiver of locational requirements.
Second now.
Let the record show that the vote passes 4-0. Moving on to Agenda Item Six. This Agenda Item is a consideration of a development plan D23-9 and density bonus DB2304 to allow the demolition of an existing two-story office building and the construction of a six-story mixed-use development consisting of 73 apartments, four live-work apartment suites, and 688 square feet of ground floor commercial space on a 1.7 acre site located generally at 503 Vista Bella, Vista Bella mixed use. Site has a general plan land use designation and a corresponding zoning designation in limited commercial and general commercial.
Good evening, Chair Malik.
Oh, disclosures please, I'm sorry.
I was, I've definitely read the staff report, got lots of emails, spoke through email with the applicant, with one of the church, church's applicant, church's opposition. Was also on the Planning Commission when we approved the church with the parking agreement at the time.
Similar disclosures, read the staff report, met with neighboring, a neighbor of the church, Coastline Baptist. Read the staff report and like Louise, I was on the Planning Commission when the church went through its own approval process for its redevelopment two, three, four years ago, so.
Likewise, read the staff report, met with the neighboring church staff member, very familiar with the area and so.
Okay. I as well, I'm familiar with the area, drove by, met with the neighbors and have read all the staff reports. Please.
Hey, good evening, Planning Commission Manny Baeza here from the Planning Division presenting this item. Before you have a two-part application, the first part of the application is a development plan to demolish an existing vacant two-story office building and surface parking lot and to, and to approve a mixed-use development plan for the construction of a six-story mixed-use building containing 73 apartments, four live-work units, 688 square feet of ground floor commercial space, and surface and subterranean parking on a 1.74 acre site. The second part of this application is a density bonus, application to grant a 50% density bonus over the maximum density of 29 dwelling units per acre by reserving 15% of the units, eight units, for low, for very low-income household. Here we have an aerial of the project site. The project is located in the Oceana neighborhood. It's located in the limited commercial and general commercial districts of the city. There's an existing office building on one of the properties that's proposed for demolition. The project is located on the south side of Vista Rey, east of El Camino Real and west of Vista Bella. Surrounding properties include multifamily development to the north, a church property to the south, the Oceana community to the east, and a gas station and open space to the west. Here are some pictures of the project site. At the top, you have the project from Vista Bella, and at the bottom, you have the project site, the back site off of Vista Rey. So you see the office building and then the back site shows a significant slope and then you have the gas station behind the, the project site. The project site is comprised of two separate parcels. In order to create more flat area for this project site, two large retaining walls are proposed along the south and west property lines, they're denoted here in red. The building will face Vista Bella, it's oriented to Vista Bella. Access will also be taken off of Vista Bella, and the, the project proposes 87 parking stalls at grade or underneath the building. Here are the elevations for the building. The project features Spanish-style architecture. It would have white stucco walls and S-style roofing. There are arched balcony and staircase openings, black metal rails and light fixtures for accents. The footprint of the building is stepped and recessed to provide articulation, and human scale is provided at the lower floors with the use of wood trellises, stone veneers, and roof cornice at the second floor. Here is the landscape plan for the project. The landscape plan is designed to complement different parts of the project and address the loss of the 51 existing trees. The applicant is proposing 49 new trees in 15-gallon, 24-inch box and 36-inch box sizes. The landscape and irrigation plans were reviewed by the city's landscape architect for consistency with the city standard. With regard to the density bonus application, the project site currently has, is allowed to have a dense, a base density of 29 dwelling units per acre with an area of 1.739 acres. This would allow for 51 dwelling units. The applicant is setting aside 15% of the units for very low-income households. By setting aside 15%, they're entitled to a 50% density bonus, which would be 26 additional units for a total of 77 units for the project site and a density of 44.28 dwelling units per acre. The affordable units would be proportional to overall, to the overall project mix and square footage by the proposing one, affordable studio unit, four affordable one-bedroom units, and three affordable two-bedroom units. For this project, well, state density bonus law allows for the applicant to request as part of a density bonus, an incentive or concession from a standard that provides an identifiable, identifiable cost reduction, and also request waivers from development standards that physically preclude development densities proposed. That also point out that requested incentives, concessions, or waivers must be approved unless findings are made that the granting would result in a specific adverse impact defined as a significant quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions. Also, receipt of a density bonus incentive, concession, waiver, or reduction of development standards shall not constitute a valid basis on which to find a project housing development project is inconsistent or not in compliance or not in conformity with an applicable plan, program, policy, ordinance, standard requirement, or other similar provision. For this project, the applicant is requesting two incentives and concessions. The first one would be to remove the requirement for renewable energy on-site. The estimated cost savings is $847,000. The second incentive concession would be to decrease the required amount of, the required amount of parking from 92 to 87 stalls, and that would result in a savings of $556,000. 16 waivers are proposed as part of this project, and they include a setback, waivers from setback requirements, minimal, minimum usable open space per unit, minimum individual common area dimensions and location requirements, a minimum usable common open space, maximum floor area ratio, building and height, parking stall dimensions, and also a maximum retaining wall height. The applicant did hold two community outreach meetings in December of 2023 and May of 2024. Staff has received over 200 letters or emails in opposition from the public. Common concerns voiced in the emails and letters have to do with the size of the building and number of units. As explained in the staff report, the density bonus allows for the proposed size and density of this project. Another concern was the need for an evacuation plan for Oceana. The fire department has determined that no fire protection plan is needed as the site is not in a high-fire zone. And the, the, one of, the third most cited reason for, for opposing the project is the stability of the existing site. A geotechnical study was prepared for the project. Also, project engineers and the city, and city engineering staff had determined that a new building can safely be developed on the site. This project qualifies for an exemption for Class 32 infield exemptions under SEQA. The project is consistent with the general plan and zoning as mixed-use projects are permitted in these zones. Project is surrounded by urban uses on a site of less than five acres. The project contains no habitat for rare, sensitive, or endangered species as determined by a, by a biological assessment prepared for the site. The project does not result in significant effects pertaining to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality.
Please, please, if you can keep your comments down, you will have a chance to speak and comment on these issues. Many of you have already put your comments in to the, to the city, to the city planners. So please, let's be calm and allow each other to speak. Thank you.
The project, the project does not result in significant effects pertaining to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality as determined by technical studies prepared for the project. The project can be adequately served by all essential utilities and services as the site already has utility connected. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission confirm the issuance of a categorical exemption, Class, Class 32, and also approval of the development plan and density bonus by adopting Resolution 2024 P16 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is also presentations from the applicant as well as the Oceana Community Association.
Great, thank you Manuel. Tom, you have-
Thank you. Manuel, right?
Yes.
Thank you Manuel. Yeah, I had a number of questions and I'll probably roll them out a little bit by bit.
Recording stopped.
Why did you stop the recording? Should I pause while it? Yeah, I think we should. Yeah, I think we should.
We're recording?
We have an audio recording. We just don't have the Zoom, so we can continue because it will be recorded.
Okay. Commissioner Rosales, please continue.
Thank you. So my first question has to do with one of the bullet points you had on there, that's a scale of the project. Do you happen to know the highest, any surrounding structures in the area, Oceana? What's the highest structure? This one is like proposed to be 68 feet, I think it is.
It's taller than that, I think. It's actually in the 70s, but yeah, I think you can answer that question. The highest would probably be across the street, the three-story multifamily. I don't know what the height is there. This is at least three stories taller than that, though.
Second question would be mixed-use projects like this, as it relates to the density bonus, is there a link between the two? If they have a project that is mixed-use, they get additional ability for waivers? Or am I not getting that right?
Well, mixed-use allows you to have a higher density, like a higher base density. And then working off of that, right, you, you, you know, you propose your, your, your number of, your percentage of affordable, and that gets you your, your density bonus. You don't necessarily have to have, well, again, you want to start with, the developer wants to start with 21, 29 dwelling units per acre, and from there, build on that.
But if you bring in mixed-use, so you have commercial space available, that allows you to increase the base density for the project? Is that right?
No, that's not accurate.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to establish.
So in any commercial zone, if you, the only way to do a residential project outside of a number of state preemptions that we're not going to discuss here tonight, but the only way you can do a project that includes a residential component is through a mixed-use development. So any commercial zoning district would allow a mixed-use development with, typically with approval of a conditional use permit, and the maximum density that you can achieve without engaging with density bonus law or anything like that is 29 units per the acre. The mixed-use provisions do allow some flexibility with respect to development standards. So, and as an example, if it would lead to a superior urban design, we could reduce a setback, or we could allow an increased height, or we can have a reduced parking. It all really depends on the context in which the project is, where the project is located and what's surrounding it. In this case, rather than going down the avenue of obtaining its own mixed-use development plan document and its own standards, they're just relying on state density bonus law to waive the typical development standards of the underlying zoning district that would physically preclude the project.
So there's no hard and fast correlation between the mixed-use, there's only 688 square feet of retail in this project, between leveraging that and an increase in the density bonus?
No, there isn't. There isn't a correlation. And I think you're, you're trying to get at is, is there a minimum, is there like a percentage of?
That's where I was going.
An FAR that has to be dedicated to commercial, to, you know, is there a split? And the, the short answer is there isn't. Our, our provisions in, in Section 3042 of Article 30 allow the applicant to propose a project and the staff to evaluate it.
Well, that's where I was going, because I was wondering if the city or the state law had any percentage requirement for that. Sounds like there isn't, because otherwise, I'm, I'm kind of curious why the applicant would propose 688 square feet of retail. I mean, I think my living room is bigger than that. So, like, why bother? But I'll let the applicant address that. The last question I had, because I know this is going to be a key point brought up by some of the folks in the audience, is, I'll call them, that's probably the wrong term, but ancillary agreements on properties that, that are next to each other. And that's my inarticulate way of saying, there is a parking agreement between the church and this applicant, and the city is a, is a party to that, and they somewhat acknowledge it in the staff report, not quite as clear as I would like to see it. But to my understanding, that issue is unresolved in terms of, I guess, reach an agreement that, hey, we have a parking agreement, and I don't want to let it go. I'm speaking on, you know, what the church might say. So how does that play into this issue of project development, given that there's an agreement we know exists, and again, the city's a party to it, that is still kind of hanging out there, unresolved, and not really, not really been touched upon, Manuel, on your presentation, really not touched upon in the staff report or the resolution? But it's kind of a core issue, so maybe that's too much for you to get into at this point, unless you want to, but.
I'm happy to, to respond to that, that question. So let me make it very clear. I mean, this is how we articulated in the staff report. The city is not part of that agreement, is not party to that agreement. It's a private agreement between two property owners. The way we've represented it in the staff report, the way we've represented it to the church when they've asked on numerous occasions, is that this is a private matter that needs to resolve civilly. This is a civil matter between two property owners. There is a provision in the agreement that says the city has to agree to changes, basically. And our, our way of agreeing to these changes is by recommending approval of this project to you today. Says that the city, I think the agreement says something like, the city has to agree to, in addition to the other party.
Recording in progress.
Any material changes to the project before they're made, and, or to each, any of the individual sites before they're made. And the answer to that is, the city has given their written authorization in the form of this recommendation to you tonight. So there's no doubt that there's this outstanding issue, that there's an agreement in place, and these two parties have to work out that in a civil matter. That's a civil matter to be taken care of by those parties.
Yeah, and the agreement that I'm speaking to is silent on the requirement that all the parties, the city, the church, and the owner of this project, it's silent on all three parties having to agree. So I guess it's open to some interpretation. I'll leave it at that, because I know it's going to come up again. And I have other questions, but I'll wait. So go ahead and go to somebody else.
Commissioner Baumann?
I definitely have some questions, as Commissioner Rosales brought up on that same subject. So when the applicant comes before us, I'd like to hear a little bit more about how they're going to resolve this issue between the, the church and themselves. The other issue I was going to just kind of, just kind of pointing out, that retaining wall from the gas station to this project is over 20 feet, right? And, and I know one of their waivers says they don't have to do anything to it, so I'd like to kind of know from the applicant what they, what they propose the retaining wall will look like. Like, hopefully, it will be some kind of appealing, because it is right along the roadway, so I kind of want to know a little bit more about that. And the other one is, I noticed that, I guess, the wastewater is going towards Bella Vista, but I think that there's, the stormwater is going towards a large cistern that's in the back of the property. Is that what that is? Okay. So that cistern is right next to the retaining wall, within less than 10 feet, and that means all that stormwater is going to go there. So it's all, it's surcharging that wall. I'm sure that the engineers can come up with all kinds of great, you know, engineering techniques to be able to make that wall solid. But if that, if that cistern leaks, or if the wall, if the dirt gets impacted with the soil and being the water, that's a kind of a potential hazard. And I know that, right, just right down the street, like, north of that, they've had a lot of problems with the earth. So I, that's just a real kind of scary little thing right there. So I'd like to hear a little bit more from the applicant's perspective on what they feel that that's going to be a safe thing for below them, the gas station. And I guess that's pretty much with that, with the water, the retaining wall, and then the parking agreement. Those are my first couple of questions. For the applicant, I guess, mainly.
Anything else?
One of the things that, being a safety professional, is I was looking at, you said that the traffic would not be impacted, as far as getting in and out, and especially in an emergency situation. I mean, that's just a single road. It's a single-lane road going down there. So I would like to know how they came to that determination, where it would not be an impact.
The city's traffic engineer looked at it, and they look for line of sight when they're evaluating a project. Also, engineering looks at that for, when they're evaluating a project line of sight. There's actually a signal going in at Vista Ray and El Camino Real. So, I mean, and there's also, there's already a signal, right? Further south on El Camino Real, the control traffic there. So I think between those two, you know, intersection, between those two intersections, they're signalized, right? So that should alleviate, I guess, concerns of, of visibility and line of sight.
Well, we'll discuss that more. Thank you.
Okay. And you said the, thank you, Manuel. You said the applicant has a presentation as well?
Good evening, Commissioners Morgan Gallagher, Land Use Counsel for the applicant. We'll do a short presentation, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
By way of introduction, the team here with me today is Tim Barzal and Louis Scotty. They're Principals of Vistabella Investment Group, LLC. Gary Miller is the Principal of Miller Architectural Corporation. They were the architects on the project. With him is Sergio, you know, an architect as well. We have our consultants here, Element Consulting for Biology, Trans Systems for Traffic, Urban Crossroads for Noise, and Aaron Parker with SBO Engineering for Civil Engineering. The first thing I'd like to mention, and Manny did a great job of outlining SB 330, the Housing Accountability Act, but I just wanted to hit on a couple of points. California is currently in a housing crisis. We have, we're ranked 49th in housing units per capita. We're short by at least 3 million units. We need many, many more units in the state, and our housing is expensive, 2.0 times the U.S. as a whole. The state has recognized this by implementing some protections for housing projects, including the Housing Accountability Act, sometimes called SB 330, which applies to any housing project that is at least 2/3 residential, including this project. And it mandates approval of a project, a housing development project, as long as it's consistent with general plan and zoning as the project is here, except in very limited circumstances that Manny went over, if there's essentially health and safety impacts that can be shown with substantial evidence. The city's looked at this project and has not found evidence of any health and safety impacts here. Next, I wanted to quickly go over density bonus law. As Manny said, where this is a density bonus project, we're asking for a 50% density bonus tonight, and two incentives, and several waivers. We are entitled, under state law, to 100% density bonus, but we've asked here for 50. So we could have gone up to 102 units. I wanted to make that point. We are not maxing out on density here. We're asking for a 50% bonus, which is half of what we could ask for. We're entitled to incentives and concessions based on providing 15% affordable units, and we are entitled to unlimited waivers. So we're asking for 16, but we're entitled to unlimited numbers, so we could have asked for a lot more. We're very much trying to be sensitive to the community. So the density bonus consists of density, increased density, incentives and concessions, which we're asking for removing the renewable energy requirement, and a site reduction in parking to 87 rather than 93 that are required, and 16 waivers, which we can go into detail on, and, and I think Gary will go into detail on some of those when he discusses the architecture. And I'll hand it over to Gary with that, but available for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Gary Miller with Miller Architectural Corporation, located in Redlands, California. So we are in a new era of housing development. These new state development laws have turned housing development on its ear. And so what we're here to do tonight is try to find a balance between what the state allows and what the community would like to see. Now, with these new laws in place, a viable project must seek a higher density if it hopes to compete in this new altered housing market. Competitive projects, other than this, other projects that come before you, will be seeking same kinds of exceptions and waivers, and the same level of density and heights, et cetera. That's not something that perhaps the city even wants, but the state has opened that up. So the good people of Oceanside, and you good people, we all wrestle with that now. As stated, we could build as many as 102 units. That's not what we're proposing. We're proposing 77, which we are doing our best to strike a balance in that regard. The building projects that are illustrated here are just examples of the kind of projects that will now be coming forward under these new laws. This is the existing site, as was shown by Mr. Baeza previously, and the building is approximately 50 years old or 46 years old, and it was developed in an era when we were heavily dependent on the automobile. Parking is between the building and the street. It's difficult to see the building because the parking's out in front. Generally speaking, parking is not a very attractive thing to be looking at. But that's the way we, we developed in the 70s. It's not particularly pedestrian-friendly. It, you look at the plan view in the lower part of this slide, it sits rather awkwardly on the site, and that was to accommodate parking. The building, the building has really reached the end of its useful life, and it's time to make a change. What we hope to do is take all of the great qualities that are found here in Oceanside and balance that with the need for additional housing and the opportunities the state now afford multifamily develop. And we would like to just point out that my experience has been, the quality of life isn't so much dependent on the level of density as it is by the quality of the development itself. And what we're trying to achieve here is a quality project. This project, you can't quite see the top there, but this was reviewed approximately six times, back and forth between our proposal and the city staff, and that is a list of all of the different components that were put under, under review compared to local development code, as well as state environmental code. So it has been very closely scrutinized. This view is taken looking south on Vistabella, at the intersection of Vistabella and Vista Ray, and what it illustrates is there is approximately a 33-foot difference in height from the Oceana property on the left to the proposed project on the right. This proposed project will lower their site slightly. The net effect of that is that those standing on the site, Vistabella, at their eye level, they're looking at three stories above their eye level, not six. With respect to traffic safety, again, a thorough traffic study has been prepared and reviewed by the city. According to this traffic study, the existing traffic conditions, combined with the added traffic from this project, still remain within the city traffic standards, and the study concluded that there's no significant impact from this project. The service levels at the intersections remain close to what they The service levels at the intersections remain close to what they were prior to this development coming forward. We understand that the city plans to eventually sometime in the future add a traffic signal at El Camino and Vista Ray. There will be some significant traffic impact fees paid by this project should it be approved, and that will go a long ways to help fund that traffic. We note that FIRE has reviewed this as well and has not identified any safety issues. This project revitalizes an underutilized and antiquated site. As already mentioned, the top of the parapet is 68 feet above the grade of their site. And there is a trap, an elevator, an elevator penthouse that is 73 feet. But the primary part of the building is 68 feet, and that varies somewhat because there's been articulation introduced. I'd like to point out that 47% of the site, 47% of the site will be landscaped, which is quite a generous amount of landscaping for any multi, multi-unit project. And the pool, illustrated there with that blue patch, is at the back of the property. So, the noise associated with pool activity would be screened from the residence to the This data has already been provided to you, so we won't take your time repeating that information. This is a ground floor view of the project. I think an excellent question was raised with respect to the amount of commercial. Commercial is basically proportioned to the availability in the street front. Generous plaza has been provided, so that up front. Yes, I can't point with this, but in front of the building, there's a plaza for people who can congregate. And if a coffee shop were to move in there, that's a place they could have their coffee outside and enjoy that amenity. Architecturally, that has been discussed in quite a bit of detail. We just would like to point out that the concrete, that the roofing material is concrete roof tile, so that's an upgrade in that. And the other materials and the level of articulation is associated with the high-quality And then the slide, or the photograph on the left is a trellis work that's on the roof deck area. So, there's activity that can be had on the roof. And then the picture on the right is swimming pool, and that is a list of some of the amenities that will be offered. Inside, again, it's a more upscale luxury-quality apartment project. The flooring is, is a luxury wood vinyl. The, the units are spacious. Ceilings are nine feet. Many apartment projects are only eight feet, have only eight-foot ceilings. These are nine-foot ceilings. All of the door heights, all of the window heights are at eight feet, which gives it a very spacious feel. The countertops are made, are quartz countertops, not Formica. Many of the units have an island. And then you can see that shiny material in the very back slide where the kitchen is, is a full tile backsplash. Most places give you a four-inch tile backsplash. So, again, all of these things are just efforts to make this a high-quality project. So, in conclusion, we're doing our best to be sensitive to this neighborhood. I would like to compliment the neighbors. We had two conversations with them, and they're strong feelings about this project. We certainly recognize that. But through all of that, they've been very civil and very articulate in pressing their concerns. The SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act requirements have been met. This does bring services to the neighborhood that allow people to walk to them rather than get in their cars. There's a very exceptional management structure that will make sure that they're good neighbors. I would like to mention, there was a question raised by, I believe it was you, Commissioner Anthony, about emergency exiting. I happen to live, I have been living in an apartment project recently because we're renovating my home. And that has 208 units with one primary entrance and one emergency entrance exit. And I have found that to be free of congestion. I come and go without even one car blocking me from going in and out. So, it seems to work pretty well in this, far less than 208. So, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Commissioner Razzles?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question, but one of the points you made I found was interesting. You said, you know, state law is what it is now in terms of density bonus of the projects we're seeing. And we've seen a few here in the city. I think one of them I, I deemed to be hideous because it was a giant shoebox on a hill. I, I think if, if you do this and if you, because I think you used the term, or you, your phrase was, cities often don't want these, but state law is what it is. And this is a very large project in what is otherwise a very small community. So, I don't think I would lead my presentation with a term, well, we could have made it even bigger. I think I'd probably leave, I think I'd leave that out. I think acknowledging that cities aren't real fond of these is probably good enough. Don't, don't use that other term. I touched upon earlier in my question to staff, the issue, the parking agreement between your project proponents and the church next door. Do you want to touch on that, or does legal want to touch on that? Because I really want you to speak to that issue because, like I said earlier, it seems like a big issue to them. And it's really, nobody's really touched on it yet. So, legal, do you want, your legal want to step up and tackle that one?
Before that, and I did want to mention, there is an animation that we have queued up, which we conclude with. We didn't want to interrupt question-answer.
Thank you for the question. So, we have been working with the church. We, we thought it might be better just to extinguish the agreement entirely. They did not want to do that. So, we will abide by the agreement. There's nothing prohibitive in the agreement for the project. We will continue to use parking sharing agreement.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for right now. Chair.
I actually have a question about the construction phase on this, and I think it's either going to be to the developer or to Manny. The project rating, you've got about 11,500-plus yards of exfil coming out of there. That's a lot of, that's a lot of trips when we look at the safety and public safety with that. The traffic signal was mentioned, just from a timing perspective in terms of traffic flow with an increased footprint of heavy construction. If it were to be 20-yard trucks, that's 578 trips. If they were smaller, obviously, the number goes up. So, I'm just curious how that will be managed or mitigated.
Commissioner Malik, that, it's a fair amount of fill that's, or cut, I should say, that's being proposed to leave the site. That's not going to happen all in one day. It's going to happen over a period of time. So, those 500 trips start dwindling down to, you know, maybe several dozen a day. So, it really depends on how fast the operation moves. Prior to the issuance of a permit, the developer needs to apply for and obtain a traffic management plan, a construction management plan from the city's traffic engineering division. They kind of outlaw, outlines their hall route, like which way are you going to go? And so, all that's taken into consideration before the issuance of that permit. And so, I don't have an answer for you now, like how's it going to be managed or where it's going to be. But there's a process in place to ensure, at least that the city has on paper documented what, which, which route of travel those trucks will be going. You know, they often may go to where the fill is needed, right? So, they might go to a construction site here in town. They might go to a construction site in Pendleton. They might go to a construction site in Carlsbad. So, all that's yet to be determined.
And the signal is going to be, do we have any idea of the timing for that?
We could ask the city traffic engineer, if she's here, what the timing might be. But that, that traffic signal installation is a requirement of the Ocean Point project that's currently under development. They're currently building it. I'm assuming that there is a trigger, like a threshold. They reach so many number of units created and occupied where they have to install the units. I think that project has 142, 147 units, something like that. And so, I'm sure it's before they're complete, the traffic signal will be installed before they complete that project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. If she's going to address, I'd just like to hear a little bit more about how you're handling the stormwater and the cistern and all that kind of good stuff and all, you know, maybe even just to kind of give me some walkthrough on that because that looks pretty, it's different. I've never seen this kind of a project with the 20, 30-foot-high retaining walls and, you know, a cistern full of water and all this kind of good stuff. Just kind of tell me a little bit more about your design.
Sure. It's a good, good question. I'm the civil engineer, Aaron Parker, with SBO. I've done several projects here at Oceanside. This cistern design is designed to accom-
Please state your name before you-
Oh, I'm sorry. Aaron Parker.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, we're required to mitigate the stormwater before it leaves the site. Some of that is through treatment and cleaning of the water, and some of that is just holding back the water so it doesn't leave the site so fast. So, we've designed a cistern or a tank on the site. The tank is going to be designed with, as a concrete tank. So, it's not going to be plastic. It's going to be, it'll be a sturdy tank. So, you don't have to worry about any blowouts or anything of that nature. It's, it'll be underground. I think I heard you say that the proximity of the wall was a concern. It is a 25-foot wall. You know, that, that particular type of wall is a GeoGrid wall. Excuse me. That's a plantable wall, so it should be screened with a natural kind of planting or vines that hang up or on it or over it. It's laid back a little bit as well. So, and it's got an open face. So, so any kind of water intrusion behind the wall, you know, it'll have drainage behind the wall as well. But if there were any type of a leak or, or anything like that, it wouldn't cause a catastrophic failure of the wall. They're designed to handle that situation. So.
So, it is plantable then? Because I thought that was one of the, one of the actual, I forgot, one of the exceptions or you didn't have to, you didn't have to do anything to the wall, but you're actually going to use a plantable wall?
We've got different types of walls on the site. So, we have a plantable wall along that edge that faces the gas station. Along the church, that wall is a different type of wall system that's not.
Not planted. But that one, the one that you're going to see from the street, El Camino Real, is pretty much going to be a plantable-type wall from the gas station view.
Yeah, exactly. It would, it would allow some green vines to hang it down over it. It's laid back a little bit more as well. Yeah.
Interesting. So, there's like a pump system then and all that kind of idea, like what-
No, it's all gravity.
It's all gravity.
Yeah, yeah. There's no pump. And, you know, the tank would only be full in a really large storm event, and then it would slowly drain down. You know, day-to-day storms, it's just going to see a very, very low amount of water that runs through it.
Okay.
We try to design it so that it doesn't exceed what a pre-development would, so there's no impact downstream as far from a stormwater.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, you got it.
Anything else?
No.
If we have, open for public comment. We have, are we going to do the, the video?
They have 6 minutes and 15 seconds left of their time, so if they'd like to do that.
That's great. If there's more to finish, that's fine. I wasn't sure, but we were finished.
So, what you see here is, is driving across the front of the church with the proposed church improvements. So, we're driving north on Vista Bella, coming to the, to the apartment project. And that's the driveway on the south side, retaining wall that was originally questioned. The plaza in front, and you can see the retail that that would accommodate. Then as Vista Bella takes a dive down, that retaining wall across the front gets taller. And then that's all planted so that it softens the front of the building. And the stairways are open to provide a, a kind of an interesting concept. This is the back of the building or west side of the building, wall at the corner. And then this rotates around to the south side. That's, that's the extent of this presentation.
Was there anything else that you guys had to present? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have people set up to speak.
Vice Chair Malik, yes. Are you ready for me to go ahead and start the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and start with our group, our group speakers first. So, you will not see anything on the screen, but I'll go ahead and read your names. The first group we're going to hear from is Ellen Marcial, Peter Cornog, Tracy Creason, and Jaleah Finley, with Ellen being your speaker. And you will have 10 minutes to speak.
Okay, now you can start my time. So, I have 10 minutes. I'm Ellen Marcial. I live at 3808 Vista Campana South, house number 40 in Oceanside. I am chair of an HOA board-appointed ad hoc committee to inform and engage the Oceana residents. I represent all of my neighbors in Oceana, many of whom are here tonight wearing white shirts and colorful buttons. Wave hello, Oceana neighbors. Thank you. Thank you. There are many more neighbors who wish they could have been here tonight. We are a very engaged community and have already sent in over 200 letters, as Manny had said, in opposition to this apartment tower. In addition, we have had town hall meetings with Mayor Sanchez and Councilmember Eric Joyce to discuss this project. I wish that everyone here could talk to you tonight about their love of community, the nurturing environment of a senior community, and the amazing views on almost every corner. But thanks to the state density bonus law, none of that matters. And all we can do to protest this proposed apartment tower is to prove specific adverse impacts, such as health and safety, that this project will result. We are now going to hand you several reasons to deny this application. Oceanside Community Association, known colloquially as Oceana, is a vulnerable senior community built in the late 1960s. Oceana consists of 932 single-story homes on 144 acres. Ages of residents vary from 55 into their 90s. This project, as presently proposed, does not belong here. Taking advantage of the regional housing needs assessment and the California density bonus law, the requested 16 waivers are designed to allow the developers' desired density for the site to be achieved. It fails to make a dent in Oceanside's need for affordable housing. The lot includes a section that abuts El Camino Real that is unusable, but is still included in the developers' density calculation and landscape calculations. It is quite simply a developer grab, fitting a size 10-foot into a size 4 shoe. It is also an infill development with no consideration of the surrounding development, such as the Lennar project currently under construction on nearby Stagecoach Lane. First, let me show you what the site looks like now as standing on the west side of El Camino Real, across from the gas station. So, you can see the gas station's there on the lower right, the church is in the upper right, and the existing two-story office building is there. Now, let me show you a CAD rendering done by an architect who lives in our community of what the development will look like from the same vantage point. Because the developer, although that animation was quite interesting, we'd never seen that before, and the developer never submitted an adequate photo simulation other than that animation you just saw, we made this one ourselves. This also does not even show what the retaining wall will look like because we simply don't know what it will look like. There again is the before and after, the before on the top and the after on the bottom. There again is the before and after, the before on the top and the after on the bottom. So here are the five health and safety issues that we're going to present to you that you can use to deny this application. The first one is ingress and egress. This is a map of our community. Two single-lane roadways, Jaylee, can you show those? Thank you. Two single-lane roadways, Vista Ray and Vista Oceana, both exiting onto El Camino Real, are the only ingress and egress points for an area that now encompasses over 1,265 homes if you include the Oceana condos, Vista de Oceana, Ocean Point, and now 503 Vista Bella. Visitors to the church and the golf course will only further compromise traffic flow. Issue number two is also a safety issue, and it's vehicular access. With an aging population struggling with chronic health issues, Oceana finds itself requiring the frequent services of local fire and paramedic professionals. Traffic backed up at Vista Oceana and Vista Ray will negatively impact the ability of emergency vehicles to access the community. In addition, since the apartment tower residents won't have enough onsite places to park, many of them will be parking on the adjacent streets, further impacting emergency vehicle access. Number three, pedestrian safety. Many of Oceana's residents are daily walkers, and several are vision or hearing impaired or both. Because the developers of the apartment tower are marketing to young professionals, the new residents will likely be people who live at a much faster pace than we do. Oceana's current inadequate infrastructure, including a lack of bike lanes and sidewalks within two feet of the roadway, are an accident waiting to happen. Number four safety issue is the slope instability. The site of the proposed tower is on a slope which has proven to be unstable. Landslides have occurred for decades. The applicant's architect just acknowledged that on his slideshow, although he didn't read it out loud, I noticed. This is the 1997 slope repair plan for the Coastline Church property. And you can see in the middle, there's that gray area where the slope failed and the soil came down onto the sidewalk and onto the road. That handwritten note, I'll blow it up for you now and I'll read it, says, in part, and it was written by the city engineer, again, in 1997, reads in part, "This plan was prepared as a result of a slope failure and a nuisance declaration by the city. Climate change and increased total rainfall, which in turn is causing flooding and slope failures in our area. The existing two-story office building on the proposed tower site is shifting and has structural cracks and broken windows as a result. The site is clearly unstable. The following photos show actual landslides from earlier this year, from the site of the proposed tower down onto the Oceana gas property below. Another larger slope failure at this particular location could result in an environmental disaster due to the hazardous materials at the existing gas station being in the direct landslide path." So the photo on the left, again, you can see the, the building, the two-story office building at the top, and you can see where the, the slope failed onto the ground below. That's the back of the gas station. There was some significant damage there. That was about a year ago. This photo reveals a current slope failure that continues to erode the contiguous hillside along El Camino Real. This would be heading north towards Mission. Another photo of the slope that's failing. The last issue is, is one of health. The proposed tower will block the cooling ocean breezes and obstruct the warming sun and adversely affect the ventilation within nearby homes. So I know this is hard to see, but the little, thank you, Jaylee, the little tiny person on the right is standing in front of his or her home, and then on the left is the gas station at the, at the foot of the hill. On the left is the gas station, all the way down there. Yeah. Thank you. And then that middle white rectangle is where the new tower would be. So you can see, and this is from the developer's submittal, actually, you can see the, the little, the little black person has, has a line of sight, and the architect acknowledged this, that where they're right now, currently looking into the beautiful Oceana Valley and the airport, they will now be looking into someone's fourth-floor bedroom. This is a photo from approximately that same vantage point as the, that the little person on the, on the previous slide. This is how it looks today, and then this is how it will look once the building is If you don't find that these health, these five health and safety impacts are enough to warrant the denial of this project, then please consider the following mitigation measures. To offset the negative safety impact of ingress and egress for Oceana residents, the City of Oceanside must create an evacuation plan for Oceana in light of the added traffic and homes that have been approved between us and our only two means of egress. To offset the negative safety impact of increased traffic, we would request that the city impose an age restriction on the development. If the tower is occupied by senior citizens, the problems associated with fast-paced residents would be eliminated. Also, senior communities generally have fewer cars. If the development cannot be age-restricted, or frankly, even if it can, we would still request that the city install a three-way flashing pedestrian beacon with call buttons at the intersection of Vista Campana and Vista Bella in front of the new apartment tower. To offset the negative safety impact of the slope instability, the city should require the developer to produce engineered drawings demonstrating how the 1.74-acre parcel will be shored up to support a six-story building plus one story underground, as well as the structural details, as Commissioner Balma already pointed out, for this massive retaining wall prior to approval by this board. To offset the negative health impact of reduced airflow and ventilation, we will request that the developer establish a trust fund in the amount of $200,000. If we can demonstrate that the interior temperatures of the adjacent homes increased or decreased, once the apartment tower was erected, we will use the trust fund to restore the interior temperature of the homes to what they were prior to the tower construction. If it turns out the tower has no impact on the temperature of the homes, the entire amount would be returned to the developer. One final note. If the city will not impose any of these mitigation measures, then we would request the city at least restrict the development to what is allowed under the existing zoning. What is allowed by right is 51 residential units and a height of 50 feet. We want reasonable development in our neighborhood. We are not anti-development. I'm almost done. We are a diverse community of reasonable seniors, including renters, low-income households, and homeowners on fixed incomes. Let me close by saying the City of Oceanside ultimately has the responsibility to maintain our infrastructure and ensure the safety and health of our residents regardless of what kind of irresponsible, misplaced, and greedy developments are allowed by state law. Thank you. Up next for our group speaker, we have a group of Jonathan Telles, Mark Dooley, John Telles, and Beth Barnum. You also will have 10 minutes to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Telles, and I'm representing a group from the church. Our church used to own the property at 503 Vista Bella, and we sold it in 2005 to purchase the property next door at 547. Part of the negotiation of the sale was to implement this easement agreement. Our church purchased the rights to this easement, and these rights, these property rights are certainly of value to us as they were part of our long-term planning for the church. The agreement was documented and agreed upon by both property owners, and this agreement runs with the land and is binding on all successors. The agreement is not dependent upon the city parking code and was put together in such a way to prevent this very type of redevelopment from taking place. Now, just a few minutes ago, I was encouraged to hear Ms. Gallagher say that they would be willing to abide by the terms of the agreement. The agreement states in first page, "As a further condition of the reciprocal parking agreement, the parties covenant and agree that no building or other structure shall be placed, installed, or constructed within the areas covered by the said easements in such a manner as to obstruct or impair the ingress, egress, and parking on the respective parcels." It could be interpreted that maybe after the building was completed that they'll just park on ours and we can still park on theirs. During construction period, ingress and egress is going to be blocked, still a violation of the agreement. Neither shall either party materially diminish the number of parking spaces without the prior written consent of either party and the City of Oceanside. These parties agree to execute the grant of reciprocal agreement and the form attached to this agreement, Exhibit C. It's 14 pages long. It spells out the whole area that is being referenced. Earlier tonight, I did also, was able to read the staff report. The staff report says that stalls available to the church at the project site are not necessary for the church to meet the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the staff's recommendation is to approve the project. The language they said in there is that it's not necessary. I was genuinely shocked the city put that into writing and presented it tonight because that is a clear RALUPA violation. Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, or RALUPA, is a federal law that was unanimously passed by both houses of Congress in 2000 that protects religious institutions from land use and zoning regulations that impose a substantial burden on their religious exercises. This was signed by President Clinton in the year 2000. RALUPA does not allow the city to rely on general zoning standards to decide what is necessary for a religious institution to function effectively. Our church established this reciprocal parking agreement to meet the specific demands in high-attendance days such as Easter, Christmas, baptism celebrations, open house, anniversary, missions, conference, revival meetings, BBS, and other significant religious gatherings. These draw foremore congregants than typical attendance, and it was precisely for these peak days and opportunities for growth that the easement was created. RALUPA is clear. Religious institutions have the right to define their own needs without undue interference from the government. General zoning compliance may be adequate for routine operations, but it falls short for what our church requires for its mission. By ignoring the need for our parking and dismissing it as unnecessary, the city's recommendation directly contradicts RALUPA's protections. Even when a land use decision doesn't directly target religious exercise, courts have held that indirect burdens such as denying access to parking can violate RALUPA. RALUPA protections are not limited to what happens inside church walls. They extended the entire property, including the area which we have rights to park. In Pasagro Beach Community Church versus the, the City of St. Pete Beach in 2022, the court upheld that parking restrictions on a church constituted a substantial burden under RALUPA. That case recognized the ability to gather safely and conveniently is integral to religious exercise. Our church should have the same protections, and I ask the commission to recognize this in your decision tonight. The city staff report says that the city will not enforce the reciprocal parking agreements, terms, treating it as a civil matter between two private parties. However, the agreement explicitly requires city consent for any reduction in parking or new construction within the easement area. By recommending project approval without addressing the easement, the city effectively overrides our legally established rights. I think we all know that if SDG&E had an easement on this property in question, the staff would not be recommending this project for approval. So this is not a request for special treatment. We are just simply asking for equal rights. The right to operate our church as we always have without interference or restrictions from the government that compromise our ability to serve our congregation. To illustrate this troubling inconsistency in the city's approach to easements, I'd like to share a recent experience. Just last Friday, I visited the planning desk to request a permit exemption to build a fence in my backyard, which has a small HOA easement. My request was denied due to that HOA easement. So the city will enforce an HOA's easement to prevent me from building a simple backyard fence, yet it's unwilling, or yeah, I'm sorry, yet it's willing to recommend approval for a six-story apartment building that disregards the parking easement we rely on to conduct religious services safely and effectively. This double standard is concerning. The city should not enforce easements selectively based on convenience, especially when the easement in question protects the rights of a religious institution. The city has a responsibility to treat all easements equitably, not just when it serves a specific agenda. Now, let me turn briefly to the state density bonus law. While this law was enacted to promote affordable housing, it does not provide carte blanche for developers to override existing property rights or inflate project density without accountability. Density bonus laws grant concessions and waivers only when they don't conflict with state and federal law and do not infringe upon property rights. In this case, there are multiple conflicts with laws existing. So there's the, the health and safety aspect of the framework of the law, but then there's another category that talks about it cannot be in conflict with other laws. Conflicts with state and federal law, by diminishing or eliminating our easement-based parking, the proposed project violates the First Amendment, which protects free exercise of religion, the Fifth Amendment, and the California State Constitution's Taking Clause, which prohibit government actions that take or damage property rights without just compensation. While the city may not be physically taking the easement, its actions in approving the developer's project would have the effect of rendering the easement worthless. This is considered a regulatory taking, where a government decision deprives the owner of the, of the use and enjoyment of the property without just compensation. And obviously, as I mentioned earlier, RALUPA, which protects against local land regulations that substantially burden religious exercise. While we are committed to protecting our easement rights, but there's one other area too. In the calculations that they're requesting for density bonus baked into their calculations is roughly 15,000 feet that they don't have full control over. That is area which we have property rights, and we would like that to be taken consideration in the calculation. While we are committed to protecting our easement rights, we are also open to finding a solution that meets the needs of both parties. We are willing to work with the developer to explore compromise where he can achieve his project goals, and we can retain the parking access that is vital to our congregation's needs. Unfortunately, the notice for the community meeting intended to address such concerns was postmarked May 14th from Seattle, and we received it only after the meeting took place on May 16th. We have since reached out to the developer multiple times over the last month over email, but our efforts to communicate have gone unanswered. In closing, I urge the planning commission to consider the serious implications of approving this project in its current form. Here are our main points. Number one, the city's reliance on zoning minimums to dismiss our parking needs is misguided. Coastline Baptist Church establishes easement to meet high-attendance demands, and RALUPA protects our right to determine our own needs. The city can't define our needs and then make approval recommendations based on how they interpret that. We have the right to determine our own needs for religious exercise without undue burden. Number two, the city's decision not to enforce the easement contradicts its consistent enforcement of other easements and effectively overrides our legal rights. We're not asking for special treatment. We simply seek equal treatment to enforce the rights which we have relied on for nearly two decades. And then the density bonus law. Density bonus law has limitations. It was touched on briefly in the presentation earlier. They're few and far between, but there are limitations to density bonus law. It does not grant unrestricted power to developers to ignore legally binding agreements or calculate density based on areas that they do not fully control. We sold that property in 2005. We purchased our current property, and the property in question at 503 has been sold, I think, at least three or four times since then. If you get ready to purchase the building, the developer would have had the opportunity to get a title report and see that there are three easements that the church has on the property, and this was been, this would have been a known factor in that time. I respectfully request that the planning commission either deny this project as it stands or require significant revisions that respect the church's established rights, accurately represent density, and comply with federal and state protections. Thank you for your time in considering our-
I know this is an emotionally charged issue. We still have some more comments to get through. I appreciate everyone's desire to demonstrate that, but let's, let's try to keep this thing rolling. Thank you very much. Commissioner Rosales, you have a question?
Yes. Thank, thanks everybody for your input. I guess I would swing my question-
Excuse me, Commissioner Rosales, there still may be more public comments to come. Those are just the formal presentations from the groups, so there may be additional speakers.
Okay. I will pause my question.
Hold on.
Stop, Tom.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, we do have a few individual speakers, so if you would please come up, you're going to have your three minutes to speak. Looks like Jonathan, you were involved in a group, so I'm going to mark you as spoken. So Megan On, you will be up, and please come to the lectern, and you'll have three minutes
Dear members of the Oceanside Planning Commission, upon reviewing the traffic impact study for the 503 Vista Bella development, I have concerns about the planning commission's ability to capture accurate data related to pedestrian and bike access. I noticed in Section 3.0, Existing Conditions, it states incorrectly that there are bike lanes provided northbound and southbound along El Camino Real. Under Appendix E, a very different description is provided and is somewhat more accurate. To be clear, currently, our community has zero safe bike access along El Camino Real in either direction, and the traffic impact study does not include bike or pedestrian data. In addition, and equally concerning, is the current pedestrian sidewalk access. From Vista Ray north to Mission, on the east side of El Camino Real, there is a sidewalk that is only four feet wide and includes areas that have overgrown ice plants where the four feet narrows to roughly three feet. Additionally, there are what looks like electrical equipment boxes on that sidewalk, and again, narrows that sidewalk to roughly three feet. On the west side of El Camino Real, there is a sidewalk that dead-ends not far from the intersection of Mission and El Camino Real- the intersection of Mission and El Camino Real heading south. This very old infrastructure design forces our community to use the sidewalk on the east side for pedestrians going both directions and bicyclists going both directions at the same time and navigate around areas where the sidewalk narrows from four feet to three feet along that stretch. I believe it would be a grave injustice to approve Vistabella before the City of Oceanside fixes the unsafe and poorly designed current infrastructure to ensure our community and future Oceanside residents are able to safely travel along El Camino Real in a car, on a bike, and as a pedestrian. I humbly ask the commission to advocate for a future that is safe for all residents and encourages the ability for residents to safely drive, bike, and walk. Approving this project prematurely is not safe for our community and future residents. Thank you.
Vice Chair, that concludes our pre-registered speakers.
Do we have anybody else in the audience that wants to come forward to speak? Commissioner Rosales?
Thank you. Yeah, several, I think. And thank you, everybody, for your input. I think I'll start with a clarification, and maybe this goes to staff and city attorney and maybe legal counsel for the project. Just to get terminology correct, so I referred to a parking agreement between the two parties. Jonathan referenced an easement, so which then is tied to partly, as I understood it, to the density bonus. So Ms. Gallagher, I believe, you made a comment, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. You made a comment when I referenced the parking agreement that, as far as you're concerned, that's still in place, you're good with it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
How do you understand that dovetails into the terminology that Mr. Tellus used, and that's the easement?
So it's an agreement. He's using the term easement, and we're using the term agreement. It is an agreement between the parties, and we will abide by it. We were just chatting over here. We have 36 spaces now. There will be 35 surface spaces right there, so it's equivalent to, they can certainly still use those spaces. I think to the point that the agreement never contemplated any construction, I think that could not be the case, that they intended to prohibit construction forever. So the idea that there's, there might be a temporary disruption, I think, is entirely consistent with the agreement, and thereafter, we intend to abide by it.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Tellus, not to put words in his mouth, was okay with the construction phase of, you know, not having complete access. But then that.
He wasn't.
Okay. And maybe we can bring up Mr. Tellus afterwards. The suggestion that the easement that the church still has as part of the title conflicts maybe with the density bonus portion of the development, maybe this is a staff or city attorney thing. Did I hear that right? I mean, I think, so is that, how do you see that? I'll put it that way.
Yes, thank you. So he's suggesting that that there's a Ralupa violation, and therefore that the state density bonus law, which prohibits a project that conflicts with state or federal law? And he's trying to tie this together. That is not, that is not the case. There would not be a Ralupa violation because we intend to abide by the agreement. There's not, there's no impact to the church from the perspective of federal law, and there's certainly not a density bonus law issue. There's no conflict between this project and state or federal law.
City Attorney, can I get your nod or your input on that same issue?
Yes, I agree. This is not, the church's project, the church's rights are not at issue in this decision. It's the applicants, the adjacent property, the owner of the adjacent property whose rights are at issue here.
But again, and maybe I misunderstood partly, but I agree with what you just said, that the rights of the church might not be imposed upon, but the development itself may have some impact on the church's rights. And again, I don't know if I understand that completely, but maybe you can expand on your thought you just had?
Sure. And I want to go back a little bit to, to the agreement does create easement rights in the, in the church. So that's the correlation between the agreement and the easement rights. But nothing that the city is doing, nothing that the planning commission is doing if they approve this project would impair the church's ability to enforce its rights under, its easement rights under that agreement. So that's the main point I wanted to make.
Okay.
We're not interfering with the church's rights.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Last, it's not really a question, but I will say the Oceana Group that came up, excuse me if I don't remember your name, from the ad hoc committee, I thought your, your ideas on solutions was novel. I actually liked them. And actually, I do have a question from that. Age restriction, I thought was a really novel idea. I don't need you to come up. Maybe I can, thank you though. Age restriction, I thought was a novel idea to kind of present one solution in terms of traffic and access. Maybe this is a question for staff. Does that parcel, or the applicant, is that parcel any part of Oceana which has the, as I understand it, an age restriction covenant, or is it completely clear and free of that?
Does it have one?
Okay. Still, I thought that was a novel idea. I did like the provide engineering drawings as it relates to the slope instability. I have an engineering background, and I know I have a great deal of comfort in seeing something in detail for an issue that we, we think is real, as a number of us has pointed out. So perhaps we can bake that into what we end up doing here ultimately. And I, the last one, and I'll leave it at that, the $200,000 trust fund, I thought it was also pretty novel too. So good ideas, good solutions. I'm glad you spent time on coming up with these. That's all I have.
Commissioner Obama?
Yeah, that, I kind of agree with what you just stated with what the Oceana people came up with with their points. I think that all of them actually might be considered by the applicant. It didn't seem like it would be too expensive to add an evacuation plan study, which doesn't take that much time and effort. Age restriction, I mean, that's kind of up to, that's kind of a hard one. Flashing call button, the thing for the traffic, that sounds easy. Slope stability, I really think that's important because really, what you guys are doing is in that, on that piece of ground, as we've all seen for years, the landslides. So I hope that you could just have that within your study you've already done, probably even to build this. You must already have that information already worked out, so that could just be something you could just present to us. And then, yeah, the trust fund was another novel idea. The parking, back to the parking and the easement thing, it sounds like between the applicant and the church, there's going to be some kind of come, come to Jesus, so to speak, that you're going to be able to agree on something here, right? But the only thing that is kind of not really happening is when you're under construction, which could take about a year or maybe more, there's going to be still a parking problem for the church. So maybe you could consider helping the church out with a valet service for those times when they can actually park on site. It wouldn't take that long, but I mean, at least your patrons wouldn't have to be, have a problem with that. I'm not sure how much that would cost, but I mean, just maybe there's a way to kind of get around the idea of, of not being able to park on that site during those times during construction. So I think, I'm not sure if the applicant's going to be agreement to any of this stuff, but we've kind of been talking about, but I kind of think if we can agree with some stuff, we can actually add this into our, into the actual resolution and kind of, maybe kind of push this along if we feel strong enough on any of these things. Because I think that's, a few of them actually kind of resonated with me also. So if it's amicable that we can actually do that and advise a city council that we kind of feel like these are some things you should consider, we might be able to do that.
Did you have something, Sergio? Commissioner Anthony?
Again, excellent presentations by the Homer Group. I'm, I'm almost a senior, so. But one of the things that I wanted to touch on, Commissioner Mama, she's talked about this, the stormwater, stormwater, I've, the present company I'm working with, we have these stormwater cisterns and all this stuff. And I want to tell you, they don't work like you think they do. And so that's a concern. Those things do not always percolate down like you, you would like them to. And then when you do, when they do, you also have to come back and maintain them. You have to continually maintain those things. You get about eight years on them, and then you got to dig them up and redo it, because that's the way they work. And I don't know how you're going to do that once that's developed. The other thing was the egress safety. Again, I didn't, I didn't see the traffic study. I didn't see all the information on that. It's a lot of paperwork here that we're trying to go through. But I'm, I'm big on that egress. You said that you had a study on that, the traffic and things of that nature. That, I can't see that. I can't, you have the church there, you have seniors, you have the golf course right down the street. There's a lot of, a lot of factors that would go into an emergency situation, which is not your regular traffic. I get that. But the emergency situation where you got people trying to get out of a spot, and you have seniors, which are not as quick on the draw as some of these young buckaroos, right? So you're trying to get out of these places, and I would consider that. The, the slope, the wall, you're going to have some nice color to it, some greenery. I like that. It's still a big wall, okay? But if, if the engineering is right and you get the greenery, I'm not so much opposed to that. But outside of that, again, the, the parking situation with the, with the church next to them, they did bring up one point Jonathan did, when he talked about, there was an additional easement. And that's, I don't think we still got that clear. The additional easement that he talked about, was that?
Sergio? So Commissioners, the only encumbrance that we're familiar with that's in favor of the church on the project, the subject site, is this reciprocal parking agreement. I'm not familiar with any other easements, manning review title. There was no other evidence of any other existing easements that had been recorded against the property at 503 Vistabella in favor of the church.
He uses it as an analogy with his fence. Maybe that might, he might have thought of that.
Can we have him come up?
Jonathan, can you clarify?
There's three, the, for this agreement, as it's signed by both parties. It's a reciprocal for parking, agreement for reciprocal parking easement. So it is an easement. The second one, the two other additional are for signage. So there are two other spots where we can have signs, and we have easements on that property as well. But they are all easements, not just agreements, but easements.
Okay. Thank you.
Clarify.
Yeah. I can.
Would you like to make a recommendation?
Well, not without a long, drawn-out statement first. I always do that. No, I'll start by saying thank you again, everybody, for all of your input. It's good. We've wrestled with this issue of projects, as one of the applicant's consultants indicated, that are a lot different than they used to be. They're, they're large, lots of density, and their characters often do not fit with the neighborhood character, and we've wrestled with that up here. Every city, frankly, is wrestling with this now, but because it's state law. So all we can do, and I've said this a few times as projects come forward to us, all we can do is try to make a statement at a meeting like this, talk to staff to make sure that when they meet with the developing, developers, that they bring a really high-quality project to, to this commission, so that, you know, even, you know, so at least we get, we feel we got something out of it. It's got some quality. From what I've seen of the renderings, this has some quality. The scale is, is large, to put it mildly, so, but that's what the state law provides developers at this point. That all being said, I want to, I would like to make a motion, but I want to make sure that we capture a few things in that motion. So the first is that the resolution put before us, which is very generic, also has language in the section that deals with parking, that, that addresses this parking agreement, this easement that the church has with, with the applicant, that it acknowledges it, that it, you know, it has some language in there that it essentially codifies that it does exist, and the church has a right to maintain that, that parking agreement, this easement. So that's the first thing. The second thing would be to also introduce, I don't know if we can codify this in the resolution, but the suggestions by the Oceana Group, the five minus the age restriction, so really four of them, as solutions to try to move this forward, again, to make this more palatable to the community. I liked all of them. The age restriction one we threw out because it doesn't apply here, but the others are great, and I'd like to see those worked out between the residents and the applicant. And I don't know, Jonathan, or excuse me, Sergio, if we put that in the resolution, or if that's done administratively, but I would really like to have those captured as part of our effort here, should we decide we want to push this forward. I think that kind of captures just about everything. So I'll put all that as a motion to approve with those stipulations.
Commissioner Rosales, let me address the five points that the Oceana Group make, maybe with the exception of the age restriction, we've kind of gone over that. The evacuation plan, as an example, there's no need, there isn't nothing that mandates an evacuation plan. It could be something that is done voluntarily, and we have our fire chief here and our fire captain here could further explain how that could work. We've done it once before on a different project down in the southern part of town in Ocean Hills area, when an assisted living facility came forward. There was some concern expressed, similar to what's been expressed here tonight. And so as part of the condition of approval, that was added to the project that prior to, I'm not sure what the, the threshold or what the benchmark was, but there was a requirement for this evacuation plan to prepare, be prepared, and the city participated in that. So that's something that I think is, is doable, but it's not, I want to make it clear, it's not a requirement of this.
No, not a requirement. It's just the term feel-good is, is wrong, but it's, it's a plan that gives confidence to the, the residents that, hey, we have something that was worked out with everybody, and this is how we're going to operate should we ever need to execute it. That's really essentially what it is.
With respect to the flashing pedestrian break-ins, I think that's a novel and a good idea. But I'm not sure if there's a nexus for us to require that the developer do that. So then that puts the burden on the city to come up with funds and, and come up with a capital improvement project to install that. So I'm not sure what the nexus would be. We can have our city traffic engineer here, she may be able to provide some information on when do we require this. Typically, it's a feature for added safety as, as the, the plan expressed, but I'm not sure that we can compel the, the developer to foot that bill alone. And finally, with respect to the slope instability, obviously, before any permits are issued, this is going to be fully engineered. Right now, what, seemingly what the, the community is asking for, that those, those engineering drawings, those final engineering drawings be, be prepared now before we make a decision on this project, where the staff would recommend that they follow the normal course of the engineering process, the final engineering process, and that is done prior to issuance of any permit for work on site. So I think that's how we can address that. And finally.
But just, just to brush over that, the slope stability, so you're going to take into account the historic aspects of that whole area and what's been happening will be part of it. And then also the idea of that cistern and that whole water situation, like, like Commissioner Anthony pointed out in his own experience, those things have to have a maintenance plan that's highly, you know, you know, on top of it, like someone's got to be on top of it to make sure it's cleaned out and properly still functioning, because that could affect the stability of that wall.
So interestingly enough, before we allow a building to be occupied, there has to be a maintenance agreement entered into and bonds put in place for the maintenance in perpetuity of these stormwater facilities. So that's addressed.
That's part of it.
That's addressed during the final engineering process. And I'd like to hit on the last point here. This $200,000 is seemingly arbitrary, and it's a pot of money that would be available to the community. There's no nexus for us to require this.
Yeah. And I. Yeah, and I get all that. Thank you for clarifying it. Call it what it is, you know, this is essentially a, maybe we can't formalize it here, but a plan that's been asked for by the community of the developer and/or the city, whoever the parties are. It's mostly a communication plan. It's like, hey, we're going to, you know, we're going to go along with the fact that this big building is going to come in our community, so we're going to agree to sit down and you're going to share your information with us, like the engineering drawings. You know, we're going to meet up periodically and talk about the maintenance of that storm drain thing. So it's really a plan to make sure that people knows what's going on, because it's a really different project for this community. And I just think it has to be in place. Mechanically, how it happens, I don't know. I'll let you figure that out. They're just saying, we need this. It gives us a lot more confidence, so how you do it is fine. But maybe the developer pays for some of this. I know that you may not want to obligate them to that, but I think it's on the table. It's an ask.
It's an ask.
Yeah, it's an ask. We're just recommending to the city council, this is what we feel like. We've listened to the community. We agree with a lot of what the community has said. We're just recommending to the city council that we feel like we'd like to also ask them to consider the same things we have.
Yeah.
So let me provide a little bit of clarification in the context of what we're asking the planning commission to do tonight. It's not a recommendation to council. This would be, the planning commission can serve as a final acting body. Generally, these types of projects, whether it gets a positive and affirmative vote from this body tonight or a negative vote, it's likely going to be appealed to city council. So certainly, we can take these comments and concerns, and should this project get approved tonight, or should this project get denied tonight, and an appeal is filed, we could certainly include that narrative in any staff report that goes forward to city council.
If that's the case, and I think we need to add these points into our recommend, if we're going to approve it, we're going to reprove it with what we're just trying to say.
I think I did that already. I think in my motion that all of these would be done. I'll leave it to you procedurally, how it happens, whether it's in the resolution or just a narrative to the city council, should it get appealed. But I think I've already clarified, correct me if I'm wrong, in my motion that these things get built into our approval here tonight, should we decide to do that.
So for the audience's sake, those would have to be conditions of approval that we would include in this, as recommended by the planning commission.
Conditions of approval, including these items, correct.
With the exception of the age restriction.
With the exception of the age restriction, correct. So I've made my motion, it includes all that.
So it's all the four plus the parking, right?
Yeah.
Prior to, you know, making your motion and finalizing your vote, you may want to ask the applicant if they're remenable to these added points as conditions.
Thank you for reminding us, yes. Applicant, just nod your head.
All right, Ms. Gallagher. Yes, thank you all. Thank you. So we will evaluate all of these options. We can't agree to include them as conditions of approval for the project, because if they're financially infeasible and it doesn't make the project work, we can't agree to that tonight. But we will agree to voluntarily evaluate whether any of them are possible.
Okay, so we need to capture that in terms of how we make the resolution. Thank you.
So thank you for that clarification. So I would recommend, if you're agreeable to what the applicant's counsel is representing, rather than making these conditions of approval, that these are things that are continually worked on between staff and the applicant. The only thing we can do is report back to this body what they're agreeable to or not. So wouldn't have as teeth like a condition of approval would.
And how are we going to let the community know?
Yeah.
That's a great question. We'd have to establish some sort of communication protocol and criteria.
We can meet with them to update them.
Say it again.
We can meet with them and update them after we've evaluated it. We're happy to do that.
Isn't this whole thing kind of based on health and safety as far as, the only kind of latitude we have is based on that? And these points that the neighborhood brought up is kind of all based on that.
So the law, these are in the realm of health and safety, but what none of these points articulate is a violation of a real health and safety rule, which is the burden to meet, to consider the specific adverse impact.
They have to be almost black and white to, so. Yes, Ms. Gallagher, if that communication would be robust and thorough with the community, then I could go along with that idea, and I would very much appreciate if you would do that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so we have the motion.
We do have a motion, yeah. So we have the motion put forward. I need a second on that, but before we do that, a lot of issues that were discussed this evening. The challenges that we face as a community from state laws that mandate certain things are sometimes very difficult to both process and then to live with ultimately. But it is what it is right now in terms of how that state law operates, and we need to operate within that. It is an election year, and the one way we can change things is by voting and exercising that right to change things at the state level. And so I just remind everybody of that. It is important, and a lot of times, things change. We're not aware of them till well after the fact. In this case, we've exercised our rights here to ensure that everybody had a fair opportunity to present their issues. We've heard you at the community level, and we'll go forward. And can I get a second on this motion?
I have a second.
Okay, so we are now in. There we go.
Okay.
Let the record show that the motion passes 3-0 with Commissioner Obama voting no.
And that's just because of the fact that I don't know if I can trust the ability of, they're going to come up with some reasons why they can't afford it, which they can. So I kind of, that's why I voted no, because I don't, I hope that you guys can really work with the people.
And this meeting is adjourned? Oh, wait a minute. Oh, no, we're not yet. We've got other issues to discuss. Sorry, Sergio. Folks, if you can please take your discussions outside, we have some other business to finish up for the evening. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys, I just don't know.
I totally understand.
What? I just, you know, they're going to be like, oh, no, that's ridiculous. They can put $100,000 on this and you can't, you know what they want. Maybe, maybe like a hero. I can't believe you can just say that in a resolution. That's up the snail. So I guess that's why I said...
Folks, we still have to finish our meeting. If you could, please take your discussions outside. We have other business to conduct. If you want to stay, please sit down. Are there any other discussion items?
Vice Chair Malik, we are good to move forward.
Any reports?
Louise has the surf museum.
Put on everybody's little pack. I brought one for you guys, too. This is pretty much the California Surf Museum's kind of like, it's just like a little booklet about the museum. I think that everybody should know a little bit more about what we have in town. And we have our gala, of course, coming up November 2nd. If you, you know, want to come, you're totally welcome. But anyway, I just want to make sure, I just thought this would be kind of cool to give to you guys, just so, know a little bit about what we have in the city and what we do, so.
That's it.
Look at Louise with the short hair.
What, the short hair?
In the picture.
In the picture.
Oh, you mean your... Here's yours. Here's a minute, I brought you guys. Give one to you and have another one for Barbara. Here's one, take one to Barbara, too. There you go.
Thanks, Louise.
Thank you, Louise. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
One thing I just wanted, yeah, one quick. How about my, I have a three-minute to go there. I'm going to have to rush in here and run it up and stuff. So I think this is required for all of the, have to be injured, and have their, it's all called back. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything? Commissioner Anthony?
As a report, right? I don't know if you all have noticed the construction that's gone on at the Titleist facility.
Titleist?
The Titleist facility.
That's been going on for a while.
Yeah, and they're almost finished with it. It's a beautiful, beautiful facility. If you really want to get a good look at it, just come over, see me during the daytime at Gilead, and I'll take you up to the second floor.
Can you get us some golf balls?
What are they doing over there?
Well, they made it, it was just this big green field. And now it has sand traps and bunkers, got some elevations and greens, and it's pretty nice. It's really nice to see that. Now, I can throw you over the fence.
All right, or maybe I'll sneak on.
You can sneak in there. But they're really doing a beautiful job. They did take up a lot of time and energy putting in storm drain materials, right? Storm drain, and then also some outbuildings in the back of that facility, but they did a really excellent job. So if you ever want to come over and see that. The other thing is, Genentech is pretty much done with their construction as well. So that's all finishing up at the same time. Yeah.
So are you still, is Genentech still leaving?
No, Gen, it's Gilead that's leaving. Genentech is staying.
Genentech's staying.
Genentech is staying, Gilead is leaving, so.
Oh, great. I thought that, I thought that all that was...
No, that's just Genentech.
No, they're not, no.
Thank you. Report, Sergio.
Commissioners, just, I'll try to be brief. Upcoming planning commission items, 11, the meeting of 11/4 will likely be canceled since we don't have any items scheduled for that date. On 11/18, we have a plan to bring forward a development plan application, along with a regular coastal permit application for the addition of one unit and a two-car garage at an existing triplex located at 834 South Pacific Street. Pretty straightforward project. 12/2, we have, December 2nd, we have a regular coastal permit for a very small roof addition, actually, at 1802 South Pacific Street. It's likely that the meeting on 12/18 will be canceled, because we don't have any items projected out to that date right now. But I did want to apprise the commission of some pretty, some upcoming, pretty controversial, large-scale, complex projects that'll be coming forward and likely in the first quarter of 2025. And those include 282-unit affordable, 100% affordable housing project. You heard some comments in reference to it tonight at the Westerly Terminus of Olive Drive, just south of the railroad track. So that's getting close. Right now, it's currently, the environmental impact report is under public review. Once that comment period closes, they'll assemble the comments, provide responses to them, and then we'll have a better idea when it'll be coming forward to the planning commission.
100% affordable?
100% affordable, yep. The next controversial item that'll be coming your way is a 560,000-square-foot distribution warehouse at the old TE Connectivity Site on Eddie Jones Way. Actually, the comment period for that EIR closed almost a year ago. It would be December 31st of last year. The applicant and environmental consultant spent this time addressing the response to comments. And so there'll be some additional community outreach done ahead of a planning commission meeting. The community outreach likely, additional community outreach likely to occur sometime in mid-November, and then we'll be preparing the project to bring it forward to the decision makers. And finally, the complex, the most complex of all the complex projects I just described is the redevelopment of the Oceanside Transit Center. There, we're adopting a specific plan, we're looking to adopt a specific plan. And just a brief overview is the project consists of two mixed-use buildings. When combined, they'll have 547 residential units, with 15% of those reserved for lower-income households. Actually, 10% reserved for low-income households and 5% reserved for moderate-income households. The project also will include 173-room boutique hotel, a 64,000-square-foot headquarter building for the NCTD, for the North County Transit District, a 5,500-square-foot intermodal transportation center, about 30,000 square feet of retail commercial space, and cumulatively, it's going to have a standalone parking structure, but cumulatively, between all those structures, there's going to be approximately 1,834 parking spaces provided. So that's a pretty complex project. We hope to get you those materials well ahead of any time we schedule any of these projects for hearing, because all of them will involve an environmental impact report, and they're pretty complex. So just putting that on your radar. I put this one on your radar, telling you that it was going to be a little complex, and these are even more complex than that. And then finally, moving out to council, the only thing we have item right now, or I'm sorry, scheduled right now, the only item we have scheduled right now is a small rooftop deck approval for a building at 151 South Meyer Street. That's scheduled to go to council on the 18th of December. So that concludes my update to the planning commission bill for any questions that you might have.
How's the general plan and the South Hills B plan?
Yeah, it's a great question. Right now, we're working on responses to the comments received on the elements themselves. We hope to have revised draft elements, and those responses to comments available by the end of November. We're going to release that to the community.
This November or...
Of this November. We're going to release that to the community for additional review. And in January, at the end of January, we're tentatively scheduled to have a workshop at the city council level. Once we have that workshop and we assess whether or not we've adequately addressed the comments received from the public, we'll update the environmental impact report that was prepared for the project, and then we'll recirculate that for an additional public review period. Once that closes, we'll have to prepare a response to comments to the EIR, and then hopefully schedule these, for, schedule adoption hearings for some time in late spring, early summer of 2025. Likely come to this body in May, April or May of 2025. But that's still fluid, because we're still doing the work.
We got to get through the process. We spoke last week, I think, about the potential to, when you mentioned the workshop, I said it would be helpful for us to have something in advance as well, I think, instead of eating that elephant in one bite, kind of looking at it in a, if there's an opportunity to do that, I think it would be beneficial for the commission to be able to... Some of you have been involved with this for a long period of time, but we've got several newer members that necessarily have not, so I think it would be helpful to at least have that opportunity to...
Certainly, at minimum, what we would do is, there's a number of, and I haven't had the opportunity to kind of vet this out since we've spoke, Jay, but Commissioner Malik, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Malik, I shouldn't call you Jay at a meeting. We haven't had the opportunity to discuss, but there's a number of ways of which we could approach bringing the planning commissioners up to speed on the project. One avenue is maybe doing individual briefings. Another one is maybe having an item here, an update item in front of the planning commission, where we present a number of the elements, and maybe we can have a couple of those here at the planning commission, just to give you an opportunity. As you mentioned, it is a volume of material that I haven't even gotten the ability to get through all of it. So we understand the complexity of that document and the implication it's going to have on the city's future, and so we're being very diligent as we can be about it. And so we certainly want to afford a planning commission the opportunity to come up to speed and be as well-informed as you can be.
Thanks. Anything else?
That's all we have.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.